So far it's going off without a hitch.
See Casey's gone for one meeting.
All right, let's call to order the October 3rd, 2018 Groveland zoning board of appeals meeting. Here tonight we have Chris Goodwin, Kellyn Franzen, myself Jason Norman, and John Stokes. We only have one public application to hear and then some board minutes to approve. And then we'll do open session if anybody wants to stay. Our application tonight is made by Bruce Wood of 89 Gardner Street. Located in R3 district for the finding of fact based on shape of lot with regards to the frontage and square footage of the lot with the two existing Sentinel family residences or a detached two-family residence which would involve substantial hardship. The applicant is also requesting a variance for frontage to allow resulting two-family detached residence in accordance with all applicable sections of the Groveland zoning bylaws. Do you want to present the?
Sure.
Yeah, have a seat there.
Make sure you get a mic.
Hello, I apologize for my voice, but I lost it. If somebody finds it, I'd be happy to collect. Attorney Elizabeth Rose, I have office here at 441 Main Street in Groveland. And I'm here with the Woods, Mr. and Mrs. Wood. Nailing the property at 89 Gardner Street. This is a property that been in the Wood family for many, many years. There was a little period of time in which part of the property was subdivided and left the family and it came back into the family. Briefly, there are two structures there. If you've driven by, there's a large house on the, right on the frontage of Gardner Street. And there's a smaller house directly behind it. At the present time, the Woods live in the front house and their daughter is occupying the back property. These structures were built, near as we could tell, around 1900 or late 1980s, 1880s. So they've been there a long time. And over the course of time, the Wood family came into possession in the early 40s. In 1947, Mr. Raymond Wood subdivided the property and made a small lot. He moved into the small unit and sold the front piece to a family named Jones. And in 1963, Jones conveyed that piece back to Mr. Wood. He still maintained the other lot, Lot A. So now both A and B have merged together in 1963 and have been in the Wood family since then. It passed down to Mr. Bruce Wood's mother. And during estate planning process, she conveyed the property and remained her interest to her children and retained a life estate interest she has since passed. So the three adult children own the property. It's Mr. Wood's desire and his siblings' desire that he take possession of the property. And in order to do that, there are a few things that need to happen in terms of financing to do that, in terms of how we approach this lot. I think for zoning purposes, lots would have been presumed to have merged back in 1963 when they came again back into common ownership. It's an odd shaped lot, if you look at it in comparisons of the lots in the area. If you look at it in two ways, if you look at it originally as Lot A and then as section Lot B, it's even more odd looking, but together, it's odd. Now, in the zoning cases, they call things pork chop. I don't even know what a pork chop looks like. To me, a pork chop's kind of, I don't know, but they call it a pork chop. So I lumped it into the pork chop division.
Yeah, we get the gist.
Okay, I'm afraid to be honest. So what we're looking for honestly is to have this property seen as one lot, not only for the zoning purposes, but as the town perceives it. And I think through the zoning board, we'd be able to present that to the assessors and the powers that be, just say just assess it as one lot. And to classify this as a two-family, although they have not attached, when I look through the new zoning bylaws, they say attached, they say, just not disattached, attached and unattached, they say accessory, and then they say single-family structure, and then detached. So there's some ambiguity in there, and I think that this would fit under that provision. Now, I have a letter that Mr. Wood received from a neighbor supporting his petition. And there are a couple of other folks in the audience who are also neighbors and we believe support his petition. Mr. Wood may be able to answer any specific history issues, if you have any, so we'll let you.
Actually, I have a question. In the application, this substantial hardship, would you be able to detail that for us at all, as far as what the hardship actually entails?
The hardship is that, for one thing, as it stands listed as two lots, he can't refinance this and buy out his brother and sister. The bank is just not processing it, they don't understand it. It doesn't matter what you explain to some people, that's the big thing. And I think the town benefits, I mean, these are two lots for the lots here. And they've merged, but they're not merged. Or if, I suppose he could try to make, take the position out, sell one, and that leaves the other, go back to the prior subdivision, doesn't want to do any of that, wants to keep it there, doesn't want to change the neighborhood at all. There's really not enough frontage to do that in a safe way for access back there other than the shared driveway which they have now. So that's primarily where the hardship is at.
All right, yeah, I'm actually very, actually personally familiar with a very similar situation. I lived for 16 years in a what would be considered here partial B lot, which I had a right-of-way over someone else's driveway to get to my property, which was completely enclosed behind their property with no street frontage access. So I'm very familiar with this type of subdivision. So aside from the financing, is there any other substantial reason why the zoning should be changed?
Well, if it's not changed, then what do we classify this other unit as?
Well, I mean, right now-
Do we have to keep it vacant or?
I mean, right now, it appears that it's zoned as two lots, each with a single family dwelling in it. That's the way I would be, and please, you know, correct me if I'm wrong here.
If I can say something-
No, please, please.
The deed on the property, there's one deed, but it's two lots. And that's what's holding up the financing, that to buy out my brother and sister, is that the loaning institutions don't like the fact that there's one deed and two lots.
Oh, okay, so the partial B does not have its own separate deed from, oh, okay.
That's when it was joined together in 63, combined the two lots in the deed.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? When I drove by the property, I was trying to sort it out in my head, right? Now, there appears to be a third structure, like in the back of this, is there another?
There's just a shed.
Like a brown structure?
It's just a shed.
Okay, because it looked like there was a pool behind it and everything, and it was like, it looked like another house.
And that dog leg in the back, there's a pool, very small pump house, but at the end of the driveway is just a storage shed.
Okay, is it from the street as you're driving by quick? Because you can't like stop, and so it kind of looked like another house. And so I was trying to look it up online, trying to figure out what it could be, and I, so that helps a lot. I was trying to, I'm like, I could see it, it's brown. It's not like I said-
Yeah, something there.
Yeah, there's something there, but there's a lot of trees there too, so you're trying to like, without actually driving onto the property, it was a little difficult to see. Okay. So have you, just another question that came to mind, is, has the property been appraised at all? Have you ever had it appraised?
Yes, I did.
How did they appraise it, as a two-family or one-family? Do you know?
They appraised it as two separate, two separate lots, two separate buildings, because that's how the town has its own.
And that's how it's assessed right now for tax purposes?
Yes.
It's assessed as two lots with each of the single-family structure?
Yeah, I mean, he suggested looking into this, the assessor actually did, the appraiser, the appraiser, and that along with, you know, getting rejected from the loaning institutions because, you know, they can't understand it.
And they won't finance it separately, they want to finance it all as one?
Well, they see that they can only finance against a single deed.
Right.
Yeah.
So they either accept the fact that there's two properties on one deed, or you'd have to have the legally separated in registry of deeds.
Right. But they were legally combined in 1963.
Have a copy of the chain title if you'd like a copy of the chain.
My grandparents actually lived in this house. And then my father bought it from my grandparents. And then he sold the back house to my uncle, and that's when it split. And then when my uncle moved, he sold it to Richard Jones. And when he tried to sell it, it was landlocked and people were not really interested in, so my father bought it back from him.
I see, okay.
Yeah, it's unusual that when your father bought it back from him, they wouldn't have had that transaction on its own separate deed, because that's, you know, again, from my experience personally, that's how my transactions were, was handled, again, where very similar, we had a lot situation.
At one point, they were the two separate deeds, the Jones and Woods owned it. And when Jones made it back to Wood, it became combined at that point. Yeah, but only if it came combined because whoever prepared the deed and did all that were all in the-
Right, no, exactly, exactly. It was almost a clerical error, more than I thought.
And up until this point, it didn't seem to be an issue.
Right.
Are you, I think I know the answer, but I'm going to ask anyway, you're not planning to change the structures, you're not planning to change how you, or sell them separately at any point in time? Are you looking to do any construction, anything like that, going forward?
No.
No.
I mean, we are renovating the inside of the house. And my wife and I are living in the front house, and my daughter's living in the back house, but we're going to be there till we die.
Well, I think one of the concerns that usually comes up is, when in fact that happens, what then happens to the property? Will it be rented? That's a big question. Usually the people in town are like, oh, we don't want it to be rented. So that's what, that's where I'm going with this. So your plan is to, the daughter's going to stay?
Yes, she's just going to stay, and she's actually renting the back house from us.
They will, the kids, kids will inherit the property.
Okay.
If it were to revert back to one property without any other considerations, it would probably be just classified as an in-law.
Or a two-family.
Well, I think you would need to specially specify a two-family.
Yeah, I think-
Whereas an in-law would just be the defaults.
But I don't-
On one property, because there's no-
Yeah, I mean, technically it wouldn't meet the criteria for a two-family dwelling, so it's, so it couldn't be classified as that.
Without a permit to cover a two-family.
Right.
That doesn't meet the criteria for anything. I think that's why we're here, right?
Between in-laws, you could add a two-family, but either case satisfies, you're not looking to rent it to Mr. Jones again.
No.
It's intended to stay in the family.
It would be a lot easier to rent and sell if you kept them separate.
People, we can't, because if we try to go and sell one lot, it's landlocked. And you folks will say, oh, you've merged, and you're the common law.
Well, I mean, at this point, with them both being on one deed, you wouldn't be able to sell one lot without the other anyways, without first, without first, you know, having the deeds redone and having one redrawn for Lot B and, you know, amending one for Lot A, we'll say.
And we would have definitely lost our grandfather provision, so we're kind of stuck between that big rock in our place. But I think there's something because of the wonderful world of variances and discretion and things that people can do.
Certainly not the only property with this configuration where there's effectively two families separating. There's one right next to you. That one came up recently too.
No, and I think you see it with properties of that age, that, you know, there's all sorts of inconsistencies with structures and plot shapes and sizes and, you know, things weren't very uniform until fairly recently, so.
Right, and both were built in 1900 or they're about 1800s? Okay, so there's not one that's newer than the other, they've both been there since the same time? They were both built at the same time essentially? One of the reasons why I asked if you were going to change it, because then now you're changing non-conforming and-
Right, right.
But either way, in my, like, either way, no matter how you slice it, it's non-conforming. You put them together, it's non-conforming, you split them up, they're non-conforming, they're all non-conforming.
Right, right.
Okay, all right, well, that answered my big question, was why now? Finance it.
And I know there, on the plot play, there is an easement to access the back.
Yeah, right-of-way, right.
But that easement goes between the front house and my neighbor's house, which would, I think drastically devalue the houses, because there's not an awful lot of room in between the two houses.
Well, that's, that right-of-way would still be the principal way of assessing the Lot B structure, correct?
There's a shed, well, there's a driveway that accesses.
There's a driveway on the other side.
Okay. Oh, go, so the plotted right-of-way is not actually used at this point?
Correct.
Any of the neighbors in favor of combining the lots?
Do we want to read the letter and then?
Yeah, we got to read that into the record and then-
Read this and then we'll let them-
Open it to the public for questions, comments.
There's a letter from Bruce Wood, to Bruce Wood, from Ann L. Jones and Harry B. Perkins at 2 Sullivan Street in Groveland. "We have received a notice of hearing scheduled by the zoning board of appeals for Wednesday, 3rd of October at 7:30, and we appreciate the notification. Although we'd be unable to attend the meeting, we'd like to go on record that we support the application 2018-4 in requesting a variance of frontage. We have no problems whatsoever with the request and hoping that the zoning board of appeals finds good reason to grant the variance." I'm going to open it up to the public.
Can we keep this?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you like to, if you want to-
If you want to say anything to say?
We're here in a more gruesome memory, they want to go.
Yeah, do you mind?
You've been naming for 57 years.
Are you going to say your names?
Uh, we're in fourth, I think.
The address?
91 Gardner.
Thank you. I think that covers it.
Anyone else? So do you want to close the public hearing?
Do we have any other questions or are we?
Do you have any other questions?
Uh, no, I don't.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second. All those in favor?
I. So I guess now we need to figure out how to format the-
So we're just going to try to figure out now how we, what we want to do and deliberate amongst ourselves and try to figure it out. I'm sorry? You, you're more than welcome to, but it's all public anyway.
It's all public.
If you're comfortable where you are, feel free.
These are great changes.
Yeah, they are kind of comfortable, so. Not like she won't hear us back there, so. So who wants to go first?
What exactly do we need to do? First off, grant the variance based on the odd lot. There was a variance on the size of the frontage towards the, and then there was the debate about what it would be classified as.
Correct, so I think we need to deliberate what we think.
Yeah.
And then somebody make a motion.
Well, we should probably cover the hard part first, which is what are we going to classify it as?
Well, I think that's the, that's the harder, right? Because there's really, there's not a classification that fits it at this point.
Yeah, so we got to come up with something.
So what I was thinking basically is the same as what I was saying, is it really doesn't conform to anything?
Right.
So you do two lots, it doesn't conform, you do one lot, it doesn't conform, it just doesn't conform. So I think I'm in favor of putting it together as one lot. I think it makes sense, I think it'd be very difficult to sell it otherwise. It's been there since 1900 before zoning. I don't feel like there's any reason to make it split at this point. I'm not sure what anybody gains from that, I'm not sure what the town really gains from that, it's still-
No, I mean, I think the only, the only reason why, you know, to keep it split was if there's any intent to sell the back house, which clearly there isn't, so.
Right, so that's kind of what I'm thinking, I don't know, what do you guys think?
I mean, the only remission to the town would be at this point, that right now we're taxing two, two lots.
Right, but the structures are still worth the same.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, so essentially they bundle it together, and if this one is 100,000, this one's 200,000, they just build, they just tax the lot at 300. I don't know that there's much of a-
Right, right.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not a huge change. And I think it's been seen almost as one lot since 1900 anyway. Anyone else?
And no, I'd say, again, as long as there's no intent to sell the back structure, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I think it makes, certainly makes sense to combine them and-
Especially in light of the way the deed's written.
And I think the applicants know that if they ever do decide to change it, they'll have to come back and redo it all, and then if you ever want to change anything-
And have the deed done properly.
Right, or construction or anything like that, it's all changing, non-conforming, you'll be right back to see us again, so.
Right.
I don't see it in their, in their best interest to change it for no reason.
No, exactly.
They have to come back anyway, so.
Exactly, exactly, again, if they had to come back, it probably wouldn't be, so. Yeah, no, I agree, I agree.
Yeah, I think the only question is, do we specify it as a two separate, basically a two-family, open to rentals, or do we put a restriction on it to cover more of an in-law type of situation for now? Given that that would be covered what's there now, anyway.
I would be in favor of that, because I think that is definitely a concern.
It, yeah, it does, I mean, my daughter is living there, I don't anticipate her moving. If she did move, I mean, it's rental property, it's income, we're retired, but I haven't really considered that.
Well, I think where you struggle is that you have two ways you can go. One is a two-family, and it's a two-family, meaning that you, one would be rentable, one would not, right? The other one is that if it's an in-law, it's not, you can't rent it to anyone, it has to be family.
Has to be rented, family, but it has to be a family.
And let's say the kids get the property, and let's say, you know, the daughter wants to move to the front house, then family would have to-
It would still have to be family unless they came back and got another permit to cover it.
Right, yeah, they'd have to have it reclassified, yeah.
And redo another deed and, you know, re-separate it again and do, they have to go-
Well, to sell it, but just to rent it, they would need a deed.
Yeah, to rent it, they just have to have it reclassified according to, into a two-family, yeah.
Right, but if, so, but that's what I'm saying, there's two ways to go, one is a two-family, one is an in-law.
Exactly, so if we do it as an in-law, and then later on, they decide, you know, after, after hopefully many years, you know, the daughter inherits the house, she decides to try to rent the back house, she needs-
Kids, not just, kids, two, yes.
No, no, understood, thank you, family. If the, you know, the family decides to rent the back house and reclassify it as an in-law, they need to come back, have it reclassified as a two-family to rent it out, if that's going to be out of family.
Publicly rented.
I would think.
You'd have to come back in front of the board at that time, I can't speak for what they would say, 10, 15, I don't-
So it would just be a process of having your approval to reclassify it as a two-family as opposed to an in-law?
Do we have a copy of the notice specifically that went out?
Yes.
Did we call that one out?
It's in the packet. Endorse appearing there.
Yeah, because my reluctance to classify it now as a two-family is that it might not be the expectation of everybody in the neighborhood that it was going to be made a two-family that could be rented to anybody.
I agree with that, so I, I'd be more in favor of doing the single with an in-law.
So in other words said, in regards to the frontage and square footers of a lot with two single, two existing single-family residences detached.
Accessory, and then you can come back and basically resubmit to, if you ever want to rent it separately.
To classify it as a two-family, because your neighbors have not been notified that you would want to rent it at this point, so they would need time to be notified, come in and state their case if they, you know, but that's not what they, they thought they were maybe not coming, because they didn't think that was the case.
Well, that's, and again, that's not our intention right now.
Right, so that's why, but if that were the case, you would need to come back, it would be re-notified to your neighbors, it could be, you know, 20 years from now, 30 years from now, and that'd be a different board, so I don't know, I'll be long gone by then, I'm sure, not that long.
Hopefully, hopefully.
We'll see.
Yeah, hopefully it's many, many years.
Many towns are changing it, and I think it's just a matter of time on the, in law apartments. They're putting a time limit, and if the people in the back, like, you know, if the parents that are living in the back, whatever, pass, you, they're changing it so you can rent it out, even though it started as an in.
Right. Well, that's a good point, that's a good point too, at whatever point you come back, the zoning bylaws may have changed by that time.
And it makes it a moot point.
And there was a lot of discussion about that when we were redoing the zoning, many, many debates as a matter of fact. So I anticipate that will probably come up again, but at this particular time, it did not go through. So, but I, but I agree with you, I think it'll come along at some point.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, but not this round, sorry. Maybe next time.
I was trying to sweeten you.
Yeah.
So what?
I think it's so, so dry.
Well, I'm just, I think that there's a chance that'll happen.
Yeah.
Housing needs will change in the future.
Right, right.
But as it stands right now, you'd have to come back.
So, so in agreement, we classify it as a, a single-family dwelling with an approved accessory apartment?
Sounds good to me.
Are you formally making a motion?
I would like to do so.
Okay. Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion to classify the struc- the lot at eighty-nine Gardner Street as a single-family dwelling with an approved accessory apartment, in the rear, formerly known as Lot B.
Do we need to include the variance for the lot?
Right.
Informants? Which is in here somewhere.
So, if it is a single-family, that means that the the lot still has seventy-five foot frontage.
Mm-hmm.
A single family?
No.
Everywhere? I think the, I know the front setback is, I don't know if that really matters at this point.
Yeah, so, so the frontage's on Gardner Street, seventy-five feet, looks like there's eighteen feet and twenty-two feet front, uh, uh, backspace between us, so that should be fine.
I think it's the.
I think technically it was twenty.
Yeah, are you putting in your application? The required frontage is one hundred and thirty feet. The existing frontage is seventy-five feet, so, that's that's what the requirement is for a single family.
None of that's gonna change, other than the fact that we just have to put it in the motion that we.
Right.
Right.
With seventy-five feet frontage?
Yeah.
Right, so.
Basically, make it explicit that we are signing off that the new lot will not meet the current requirements.
Right, still not.
Cause the old lot didn't meet the current requirements.
Back in the day, didn't have any requirements. I think that's what.
But this, and the setbacks?
Front setback was short, sides I think were fine. The age requirement requires ten feet on the sides anyway.
Yeah, the front setback is twenty-two six, where thirty's required, which again, that's the way it is now, so.
Right, and then the right side setbacks? This is why I like both size plans. They would tease me earlier, like, this is why, cause.
Both sides are over fifteen feet.
Yeah.
Because it's fifteen to the half.
Twenty, twenty-one, one, twenty-one, two. Yeah.
So whether you go with a ten foot or a fifteen foot, it's covered.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Close the area.
Right.
Two-six-two, twenty-seven.
Right. Alright.
Okay, so, I suppose we need to change the formal motion, right?
Alright, so I, uh, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the petition to classify the, the lots at eighty-nine Gardner Street into one, single-family residence with an approved accessory apartment. Also approving the variance that allows a front, frontage of less than a hundred and thirty feet, uh, at the, at the current, um, size of seventy-five feet. And, and also allowing the twenty-two six square foot lot, with a twenty-seven thousand square foot lot, is the, the minimum set in current standards.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Enjoy your
Thank you for.
Single-family lot.
Waiting a little extra time.
Yeah, I know, I appreciate it, thank you.
That should at least make it easy.
Well, we'll see.
So.
Still need to figure out the deed part of it.
Right, yeah.
I just wanna make sure you guys know, I, and I'm sure you know. So, the decision will be filed with town clerk within fourteen days. There is an appeal period of twenty days, and Beth, Beth Rose may have to help me here, cause I'm, Julie's not here, she usually does our spiel. So, there's a twenty-day appeal period, so you would have to wait until the appeal period is over, providing nobody appeals, then you can take that down to the registry of deeds and file it as part. But just make sure you would bring back the original back to the town clerk. Right, did I get it all? Alright.
Do we need to come up with a new plot plan?
Um, I don't believe so.
Not as far as I'm concerned.
The registry may have, you know, different.
Yeah.
If the registry.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, cool.
For their purposes.
Yeah.
Right.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you, we will.
No, thank you folks for coming down as well.
Thank you for waiting.
Thank you for letting me in.
I walked around the building.
I knew they'd have to find me, because he needed to call both of us.
We were gonna send someone in the men's room, we thought maybe that's what it was.
No, I said, oh, and I thought of it when I let go of the door, I said, is that gonna lock? And it did.
It's always nice having a lawyer on the board.
Yeah, I mean, it's tough, but you're trying.
Did she send you the stuff with the samples and all that stuff too?
I have all of it, and she sent me a couple other, um, decisions that she had already written, so. Something to go by, anyway. But yeah, no, I will send it to you, so that you can review it before.
I'll take a look.
I'll get Julie's input too, just to make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, as the chairman.
I'll rubber stamp it.
Great.
I'll leave that in triplicate though. Send me three emails.
Alright, moving on.
Next is the minutes, um, which I printed out.
Did everyone get them?
Yeah. See the email?
I got the email, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I think I just put them back in here. I'll look at.
I had sent her a couple of changes, um, minor changes, and it looks like she put them in. One of them was, uh, just so everyone knows what I submitted to her, so, um, in the beginning, members present, she didn't have Casey on there. She didn't have her listed as a member, but obviously at the beginning of the meeting, she was a member, so I wanted to make sure she got to the top. And, there's one other minor minor thing. I think it was just a typo, so. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for September fifth, two thousand and eighteen meeting of zoning board of appeals.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we do not have any payments, which Julie doesn't, I don't even know if she querred anything.
You need, only the chairman signs those. Who seconded that motion?
I did.
Thank you. And there are no invoices?
No.
Uh, Julie said she would have them for the next meeting, available for the next meeting.
Okay.
That works.
Look forward to that.
Any open discussion?
Um.
I mean, we can look at this real quick if you have any.
Well, I do have a quick, quick thing I just wanna bring up real quick. I know at the last meeting, we discussed the budget briefly. Um, Casey had said that she wasn't sure what had happened, um, whether we were approved for the budget, so I heard back from the finance director today, um, we do have a budget of twenty-five hundred dollars. That's for items that are outside of our normal business, so for example, um, when we bring in application money now, that goes into a revolving fund. And in that revolving fund, that's how we pay for certified mail, that's how we pay for Julie, that's how we pay for, you know, those kinds of items. The twenty-five hundred dollars is set aside for, um, education, for
Training.
Members, training, that kind of thing, or anything that really is outside of the normal business, so, um, for example, uh, one of the things we had been discussing prior to you guys joining is, um, how we notice people for upcoming applications, and how we notice people after decisions have been made. So for example, this particular, um, application that we just heard, those, all those abutters could get a postcard rather than an actual, um, envelope that was forty-seven cents. We could do the postcard size, and do save money on the postage in that way. And then also, after the decision has been made, follow up with a postcard back to them to say, a decision was made on October third, and it was approved by the board, basically, so that they know what happened.
Mm-hmm.
So, we are supposed to be doing that, so, that was the idea of going to the postcards as opposed to save some money.
Yeah.
So, one of the things we need to do is actually buy the postcards, so, so things like that, so that's what that money is kinda for, and
Okay.
So Julie has, um, a little list of things that we can do to get those labels, that kind of stuff, so that we can actually purchase what we need to do that going forward. So we spend a little money now, but save money over the long run.
Yeah, I like it, I like it.
Okay, so, I'll kinda keep you guys in the loop about that, but
Great.
That's what I heard back from the finance director, and the other thing I wanted to know too, is that we had asked for forty-five hundred, but they approved twenty-five hundred. But, either way, I think we'll be alright for what we need.
Okay.
And none of that has been spent thus far.
Last year was only one thousand two hundred and sixty-seven spent, so.
Right, so that was mostly, I think, for a few trainings, and, um, if I recall. And then we had some time that Julie spent doing non-minute related, uh, I think she was doing some, um, financial review and stuff for us at the time, so that was kind of extra. So that's what that comes up, and that's kind of what that money's for, in case we run over in our regular.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing that she told me that she would do is to give us a, like a monthly financial report, so that we kinda know what we have for money. So we can make decisions based on what kind of money is in the account. Yeah. Cause sometimes you approve something, like, I hope we have the money, I, I, I hope so, so, we'll have that going forward. And one of the other things we use that for, is for every, periodically, we've been doing it about every six months or so, is evaluate how we are on our fees. So for example, if we're, right now, we're charging four hundred dollars for a fee, so we look at the applications for the prior six months or so, figure out how much it actually cost us to process those applications with Julie, postage, everything that we, minutes, all of that stuff, and then we figure out
Newspaper notice.
A newspaper, notices, that kind of thing. And so we just kind of keep reevaluating it to make sure that our fee covers everything that we needed to cover.
Yeah.
So, typically, in the past, we've had some applications that are very inexpensive, but then some that are very expensive, so, it's sort of kind of evened out. Um, but it's something that we really wanna keep our eye on, because if we go over, then we're over. So we need to make sure that we, just keep tabs on it, so. That will help going forward.
You know, in the past, there were a lot of in-law applications that kind of covered a lot of the other stuff too.
Right.
Cause there were, most of the applications we get that are, I mean, I'd say half of them are fairly involved, other, you exclude the in-law stuff. So they take multiple meetings.
Right.
Go over an extended period, so.
And so one of the comments.
Something about like this.
Yeah, well, it depends on, like, this one tonight, you know, that was a pretty easy one, but.
Well, it's funny you should say that, cause I was just gonna say, Julie made the comment that we went way over on this one, because if you look at all the abutters.
Anything downtown has a lot.
Exactly.
Yeah, everything is so.
So when you're further out, there's a few, there's less abutters, and so it doesn't cost as much, so, there's certain ones that cost less, and some that cost more, but.
But whatever's right on top of you, it's all like that, it's.
And we've had a lot of these, so, it's probably a good time, as soon as I get the report from Denise, maybe we can reevaluate that yet again, and kind of see where we are, and make sure that our fee is actually covering what we're doing.
And then, like I said, going to the postcard system, it should help with that as well.
Hopefully, yeah, but we'll have to make initial investment and stuff, but, the other thing we need to add though, that we have, that has not been happening, is the notice of decision at the end. So, those need to be done.
And factored in.
Yeah, it's basically a postcard with like a little label on it, you could put the information on it, put it on there and if, if it goes, but, so that's a little bit of added expense, so we need to make sure that we are covering that as well. So, but we can discuss that in detail once I get the reports, but I just kinda wanna give you an update where we are.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mm-hmm. So, uh, so what do we have here for, for next month?
Yeah, Julie just asked me to hand these out, um, this is the application for next month, so it's saving some postage, um, I'll give it to you guys here tonight, so that you have it for the next meeting. Um, we suspect there may be one other application coming in, um, but it has not appeared yet, so, uh, but they may make it in before the tenth.
Alright.
So there may be one more, and I'm sure Julie will send it, if it does allow. But for now, this is on for November, so our next date would be November.
So, November seventh?
Seven.
Seventh, okay. Okay.
Today, today, second or third?
Third. Just trying to put a little package together for Julie of the stuff that, um, she's already submitted tonight.
Are you gonna see her before the meeting, you think? You wanna get her in bits?
Before next meeting? Yeah.
Include that in there?
Sure. Maybe you can just, um. Oh, you know, cause you know what, oh, there's also something in here, this was in our box, I don't know what it is, but maybe this is our application. Probably should have opened this prior. Um, regard to the application submitted at eighty-nine Gardner Street, that involves combining two existing lots to one lot. The owners requested several months back that the assessors combine two parcels, I explained that we could not combine the lots as they both have dwellings on them, and the last plan recorded with the Essex Registry of Deeds shows the property as two lots, see plan attached. My understanding of MGL as non-conforming lots can be combined only if they are vacant and are under common ownership. I further explain that the owners would need to get approvals from zoning indoor planning board to have lots legally combined. If this request is granted, this office respectfully requests the owners produce and record a new plan com- didn't they just ask that? Combining the two lots as part of the decision. Without a new plan, this office will not be able to combine the parcels. Okay, so I'll have to maybe ask them to do that when we submit the decision.
Mm-hmm.
Or I can let Beth Rose know about that.
Well, don't they have to basically do that to get the deed updated anyway, cause the whole point is the bank is gonna need the deed updated. So they'll get a new plan when they update the deed.
Okay.
And then they can submit that to the assessors, but we should probably let them know to accept, you know. Did they send, did the assessors send this to them too, or just us? No, just us?
No, just the zoning. Well, I think they probably thought we would open this before.
Before the meeting?
Oh, we.
I mean, they did date it today.
Well, if you're listening.
Like, open right away.
If you're listening to your meeting.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Um.
The assessors ought to really get this to us like a week beforehand.
Can't that just be put into, into the, uh, decision?
No, well, there's nothing that we need to do, that
Right.
They just need to update the plan on the deed, so that the assessors can use the plan based on the deed.
Yeah.
Cause they need to, to get financing. 'Cause they need to, to get financing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they'll have to do it to get financing anyway, so it's not, it's just informational at that point, the plan itself.
It says that she further explained that the owners would need to get approvals from zoning. If this request is, the office respectfully requests the owners produce a re- okay, I was.
That's what we, we did tonight.
Yeah, okay.
Whether or not planning board cares, I, that's up to them, but I don't really know what.
Well, we can include this as.
I mean, I think.
Along with the decision. When they go to pick it up, they'll have a copy of this too.
Yeah, and plus, you know, I think, I think our decision was just one box they needed to check off in the process here, so.
Right, exactly. Okay.
I believe the decision to combine the two lots is up to the planning board, not up to us.
Right, I, I would think so. What, what are they, what are they, what are they assessing?
I mean, we can approve the use of it, but we can't say that the two lots are combined.
Well, if they own the property, that's good with the deal.
Yeah, they should. I just don't know if they're gonna need the planning board to sign off on it too before they.
Yeah, again, you know, I, I just, I just find it, I just find it unusual that back, back when they bought the house back from the Joneses, that they, that the, that the, uh, county deeds office would have just added it to their current deed rather than keeping it to existing deeds, 'cause the sale of that property would have had its own deeds.
Yeah, I don't know what to do with that.
Sure.
Well, if they don't want to sell it separately, then I'm sure it's cheaper to keep it all in one deed than to try and get them to generate a new deed.
Right.
Register a new deed. Well, long-term, I think they would have been much better off keeping it separate.
Yeah.
It's their way and we can do it.
Agreed.
All right.
Anything else?
Close.
Some, some, no, no further raises?
Motion to close the meeting at eight forty-four.
Seconded.
Those in favor?
All those in favor?
Oh, yeah.
Aye.
In favor, I'm good.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie.